...joint 501 Proctor Street, Inc., special meeting to order. May I have a roll call for the EDC, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Ruin. Mr. Marks. Mr. Wyckoff. Mr. Pena. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Womack. Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. May I ask that we stand for the invocation?
We need to call.
Oh, I'm sorry. 501.
I don't have the little thing.
I have.
We're calling to order the joint meeting of the EDC, Port Arthur EDC and 501 Proctor Street, Inc. I need a roll call, please.
Pat Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Scott. Ms. Frank.
Here.
Commissioner Senegal.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. You have a call, ma'am.
Thank you.
Stand for the invocation and pledge. Reverend Anderson, would you lead us in prayer?
We thank you for this present time. We thank you for these that have set aside time to do the business of your city. Give us insight, God give us direction. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to take this opportunity to first thank everyone for being here. I appreciate the other Mrs. Holmes joining me and chairing this meeting.
Thank you.
Today, we're here to meet to discuss for possible consideration the use of the building and the project fund balance for 501 Proctor Street. There has been some question and discussion, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Goodson.
Thank you. First of all, since we have several new members on the EDC board, I want to publicly say how much I appreciate everything that the five now long-terming members of 501 Proctor have done to help steer this project along to this point. As you all know, the building came about as a result of a long process of new market tax credit financing, partnering with the National Development Council, and then bringing Chase Bank to the table, who provided about, Pat, you can correct me wherever I get off script here, about a million six in loan proceeds, and then the rest of the building proceeds were provided by the Economic Development Corporation. The way that loan is structured, it is pretty much an interest-only loan for seven years, and the rent that is paid by the Economic Development Corporation under the master lease funds out back to 501 Proctor, which in turn quarterly pays to Chase the outstanding debt obligation. And at the end of the tax credit period, that loan dissipates, and the only debt that will be outstanding is that for the funds put in by the EDC. And at that point, the members of the 501 Proctor Board and the EDC can come back together and discuss how they are looking for the future of the building. But right now, what we're really discussing is the EDC is discussing how it wishes to structure the development of the second and third floor of the building. This, for those of you that are new to the board, has been a long discussion with this board at 501 Proctor, and they were materially involved in negotiating and being involved with Mr. Baptiste and the lease for the Chamber of Commerce, which was a special lease arrangement, and have been involved as they've discussed other possible uses for the second and third floor. Primarily, as I had discussed with President Pat Holmes today, the role of 501 Proctor is they hold about $290,000 in unexpended loan proceeds. Those loan proceeds were designed under the loan to be utilized in the development of the building. The most reasonable anticipated use for those proceeds from quite some time ago, I'm talking about back last year, was the use of those for tenant build-out improvements on either the second and third floor. An attempt was made at that point by the EDC to sort of take the amount of money that was remaining and take the amount of build-out, buildable square feet in the building and structure it out so that there would be somewhere around a $30 per square foot build-out allowance that would be presented to potential tenants in the building as the economic development corporation's sort of contribution towards a tenant's cost of building out space. Since then, you know, we have determined through our architect at the City of Port Arthur, building requirements, that about $79,000 or $80,000 would be required to put in public or restrooms that the Chamber of Commerce has its facilities inside its space, which are not usable by the general public. So to have space available to a single or multiple tenants would require the development of a bathroom on the third floor, and that has been preliminarily designed by your architect, Vince Hauser. Mr. Hauser, just a little segue, is a superb architect that specializes in redesign, reconfiguration, and reuse of historic structures. Some of you know he was involved in the City of Beaumont, in the Hotel Beaumont, and in the Jefferson Theater projects, as well as another laundry list of items. So what is really before us today is that the continued best use of these remaining $292,000, which I think, based upon our recent discussions, and Mr. Hayes can jump in a minute, we're probably looking at a much, well, we always knew we were a very competitive market, but in all likelihood, that $292,000 will not equate to what the EDC slash through 501 Proctor would probably have to put in in order to get tenant-ready space. In other words, I'm not certain whether the $30 a foot offer on the table for our contribution, I say ours collectively, your EDC and 501 Proctor for tenant build-out will be adequate to entice tenants to either of the floors. We are still optimistic, I think Mr. Hayes is too, that there's a good tenant prospect, possibly for the second floor. And what was discussed last week was the, and I apologize, I didn't catch it, Floyd didn't either, I said we're just sort of, I guess, at that point where we've talked about this so much, we kind of lose some facts. We shouldn't have referenced this as an incubator. The really intent was to look at gaining new costs to build out for what I would call spec office spaces, not for incubator, not for free, but to try to go to allow the, our manager and leasing agent to have some tools in his toolkit to try to get some people in on a for-pay basis on the, on the third floor. So, and again, Pat asked some important questions today, and I appreciate her taking a little walk back down memory lane. After the building was built, no, she's pointing like, you know, well, no, it's B. the way is the faulty memory, not you, dear, but the 501 Proctor leased this, the entire building, all four corners of this building, to the PA EDC. We are the master tenant, I mean, we are under a master lease, which means we technically leased 100% of every square foot in this building, with the understanding that we were going to then sublease as the master tenant or subtenants, the rest of the space out for the duration of the lease. So, PA EDC really has control of the entire building. You are also obligated to finish the build-out, which happened under the loan with 501 Proctor. If there are any structural improvements to the building, though, and maintenance is at the cost of PA EDC, not 501 Proctor. It was effectively, for lack of a better term, it was a net, net, net lease. All maintenance, operation costs, anything else were placed upon PA EDC. But one of the additional, I don't want to call it hooks, but the requirement is that they're saddled with the responsibility, they're the ones that are on the line with the loan with Chase and the requirements that these money be spent as a historical structure. So in the master lease agreement, which I know many of you have not had a chance to read in detail, is some of the members of 501 Proctor, and Pat in particular, who's so involved in commercial real estate, was such a help in making sure we got all the i's dotted and t's crossed, along with Kate and me, is it is really, you all lease the building. Mr. Hayes puts together letters of intent and brings tenants to ultimately lease the space, but the way the space is built out has to be in conformance with the historical nature of the building. So the role that 501 Proctor still plays, besides holding that $292,000 to allocate to you for tenant improvements, is they have to sign off on the improvements. In other words, a tenant comes in, A, and decides he wants to build out the space, take this four spec space office off, let's say someone comes in for floor number two, we're going to require them to engage their architect slash engineer to draw plans, to be approved by Mr., initially reviewed by Mr. Hauser, as our architectural expert under the Texas Historical Commission rules, which in turn, if he says these look adequate to meet the historical designated use of the building, then we would ask that 501 Proctor convene a meeting and sign off on those as well, before we would finalize a contract and lease that had as an exhibit the preliminary or the final drawings to build out the space. So they play both the role of still holding funds, but, and also being the overseer to make sure that improvements such as are made in the building conform to the requirement of the Chase loan. So what we're really here today is because I think we probably need to get off the table that we're talking about free space, but that's the decision of this body, what you lease the building for, square footage, tenant build-out. What we're just saying is, to the extent that you're asking 501 to contribute money and to the extent that improvements are going to be built, we need their approval for that $292,000, how it's used. And secondly, we need to always remember their role in overseeing the final sign-off on those improvements before we go to a final contract. So between that LOI time, when Mr. Hayes brings us a prospect, start and work with them on developing the plans, we will, we will engage 501 Proctor. They obviously have other business, they have other things besides this remaining $292,000. Again, thanks to Mr. Hauser, Stephanie Dugan, we, they were able to secure some additional funds for hopefully additional projects within their mandate. The last thing I said that was discussed last week, which was not mentioned to the 501 Board, is Stephanie Dugan reminded us that there are, and I'm aware of the IRS ones, there's some safe harbor rules where you basically avoid certain issues on the investment of funds and the review that has to be made on the, on the interest or the rate of return on your invested funds, if we can complete all the improvements in the build-out within a three-year period from the time that the 501 loan closed, which was, again, I mean, you don't have your tough, smart lawyer Kate with me, you got me, but I think it was a date in November of 2013. So we're coming up on that, that three-year period. There's also a couple of rules that Stephanie is much more familiar with than I, within the new market tax credit program, relative to what credit they're allowed to claim for the improvements. As you all know, R.J. DeMaye is their accountant, their work's not done through the city, and he presents to them annually an audit, which also includes the amount of funds that have been expended under the, under the Chase loan. And so I think after this November, there's just going to be some additional requirements in his audit review, and there may be some additional matters that I couldn't reach Stephanie. I tried to reach her, but I think she's out of town. But one of the other drivers was to try to go ahead and commit these funds in this time period before the end of that three-year period ran, again, in about four months. So that, just kind of a real big overview, and I think if Mr. Baptiste has anything to add, but the primary goal was to sit down as the two bodies and have you all decide the best manner in which to proceed. And I think, right now, at the EDC Board, that was sort of two pieces. One, let's get a final number on the constructed improvements for the bathroom facilities, which will have to be built, whether it's one or more tenants remaining on the third floor, and then a, an update to some cost numbers that were done for more non-specialized space. The tenant that Mr. Hayes was working with, I think, has taken space otherwise here in the city, so we're back to more of looking at this as a possibility of a spec space with about four offices to be built out, generally in line with what 501 Proctor probably saw some time ago from Mr. Hauser, when they were looking at this as, as it was the incubator. But that, again, was a different sort of planned rent arrangement than this one is now. This one, the Board, I believe, the other night indicated, they would only want to do a spec space on a for-monthly basis, whatever they could nego, or have Mr. Hayes negotiate with tenants.
Well, that was a great explanation, and I think several people had some comments or questions, Ms. Holmes.
I had one question, something you just said. EDC is leasing the whole building. Can you hear me? Okay. So they sublease to other individual people or companies or whatever. Whatever they negotiate, or whatever Mr. Hayes negotiates what's acceptable, then that lease goes into effect. If they don't pay, then EDC still has to pay the rent. Okay. I think I picked up on this, but I think I heard you say, even if it's zero rent, did I hear that? And when we get to zero rent, that's where we're back to incubator again.
Again, I think the most important thing from the vantage point of 501 Proctor is 100% of the debt obligation, which you all have to make to Chase, is being covered for this next seven years under that lease arrangement with PA EDC. So whether they decide to rent some square footage in the building for zero rent or not, they still have that 100% responsibility to 501 Proctor and for you to meet to Chase. I don't think, I don't think the intention is now to look at non-fee-based rents for any of the space, but at the end of the day, the Board is interested in seeing some more activity down here. For one of the things is, you know, the lease, this is an aside, the lease requires us to be entirely responsible for the security of the building. That's not included in responsibility of the owner, and we're looking at that, and as part of that conversation, we're starting to talk about, there could be multiple people in here, and how's the best way to address that? So this has been sort of resulted in several conversations of late as to the future development of the building. But you're right, if they decide that there's a zero rent on one square footage or a thousand square feet, they still have a 100% pay obligation to you all. It's not tied to what they get out of subleases. Those subleases effectively simply reduce their obligation to you all by getting in a little money to offset what they have committed to you. Yes. They would add a little bit to the, to Floyd's negative cash flow. Right now, they would help reduce some of that negative cash flow.
Did we not have someone for third floor?
We do not have a current prospect for the third floor that I'm aware of. The security firm, as I understand it, has taken space otherwise in the city.
Intent to have free lease space in this building, never. Even 18 months ago, when we talked about an incubator, was never an intent for anyone to come in here and pay nothing. Just want the record to be clear.
Ms. Womack, I think you had a...
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize to the Board that I was not here last week. However, I understand that the vote board, the EDC Board voted on something. Could you please clarify for me what was voted on by the Board?
As long as Joanie doesn't come hit me in the back of the head for trying to say what I think. The action was to secure new build-out, estimated build-out costs for the area on the third floor, which is effectively right adjacent to the chamber, and to build out four single offices, non-custom, just for what I would call spec office spaces with a common area, much like the configuration was designed about 18 months ago, but there is no specific tenant in place, so a prospective tenant, much like in the other office-sharing places around the city, could take a single office or all four offices, one, two, three, or all four offices could be leased to a prospective tenant.
Was there anything in the motion or in the action that included equipment, like, or you say a reception area? Would the reception area be responsible for all offices? I mean...
No, we did not go that far. This was purely to get a build-out of the cost of those four spaces. We weren't trying, at that point, to design a path ahead to how the, how, even if there would be a common area receptionist.
Okay, so there was no designated use of those four spaces?
No, we do not have an end user at this point that I'm aware of.
The, just for clarity, the actual item said to discuss for possible consideration the build-out of the third floor to include a common area and four incubator offices.
Yeah, and we should have left the word incubator on. That, again, was something that slid right by me, I apologize. But I think ultimately now, it's what comfort level the 501 Proctor Board still has, because previously, the motion, and I'm not going to try to say exactly what y'all said, but it was to allocate, to allow EDC to use this for approved, for improvements that meet the requirements of the historical designation of the building on the second and third floor. Again, those, we're going to come back to you all before there was a use of the money, but at this point, I just think we need to all be clear and comfortable if that's not still the wish of the 501 Proctor Board.
Do we need to go back and correct that motion? I mean, if it, did it include, the motion include the word incubator?
I don't, I don't recall if it did or not.
Do we need to correct it?
Possibly, we certainly can. I don't think that takes away from the directive you've given to Mr. Baptiste to go out and get costs, because the idea was to find out the construction cost and to make sure that once we had those from a qualified contractor, that Mr. Hauser had also looked at those costs, and he's looked at the drawings several times, so I'm sure he's just going to overlay this, and then we can correct that at the next meeting, if there's an intent to proceed.
Discuss pricing as well? Nothing?
No.
Pricing?
It has always been the content of this Board that space is rented at a dollar and 10 cent a square foot. So in this building, right now, the going rate is a dollar 10. That has not changed.
That's not changed.
Now, I will say, again, I don't know, there's other options if this Board does wish not to use this money, and I think I delivered in your package the difference, other than if you don't, you know, if you choose not to bill out, the way we could use the money is pay my lawyer fees.
Some of you also may not recall, I mean, don't worry, he's paid me, is talking about payback. Please remember that when the project begun, the Chase loan and all the funding had not, had not been completed. We started out working with Spawglass as a, and Vince Hauser on the side of the design bill project with a guaranteed maximum price contract, but in order to put together that, a lot of work was done in some preliminary contracts. And at the end, if you all, 501 Proctor Board recalls this, but for those members of the Board who were not on the Board back then, at the end of the contract, it was a guaranteed maximum price contract. And you'd say, well, that means it's a guaranteed maximum price, but if you've ever read one of those AIA, American Institute of Architect forums, there's always little outs, and the little outs were items that were undisclosed or would not have been reasonably discoverable by the contractor at the time the guaranteed maximum price was done. Well, and I'm not complaining at all to our friends at the City of Port Arthur, but we found out in the basement, there was an area that actually extended out underneath the sidewalk and out of the basic, what we would consider at that point in the contract, the footprint of the project. Additionally, some work ended up having to be done in the parking lot adjacent, which was not covered in the guaranteed maximum price contract. Those costs ended up being footed by PA EDC, because there was a finite amount of money that was available to 501 Proctor, and you say as well, why didn't they just spend the $292,000 back then? At that particular juncture, I think there was a collaboration between both these Boards saying is, we'd like to hold that money for tenant build-outs and come up with a number to spread that remaining money over these two floors, rather than just doing the reimbursement. Could we have, could it have been done differently? Certainly. But I think at the time, that was felt to be the highest and best use for the remaining monies was the tenant build-out and just wait till after that was complete and see if there was any funds remaining by which 501 could contribute some of those funds back to PA EDC. But Floyd has a list of some of those items that were incurred and have not been reimbursed, but were only planned to be reimbursed if there were funds available and left out of the Chase loan, and that just, and at this point, you know, it, the Boards could collaborate and say, let's reimburse and let 501 Proctor get out of the headache of worrying about these monies, and just get back to looking at the improvements once they're designed and brought to them, or stay the course it is with using the money for the tenant improvements and just make certain that everybody's on the same page on how that will be done. And again, I just close by saying is, and probably we need Mr. Hayes's comments, but I'm just not certain that that $30.29 a square... .41 cents a square foot is going to be enough of an enticement, at least it hasn't been so far to, and we've had a couple of tire kickers on the second floor, we're hopeful that there's a more serious one in the wind, but it just, we haven't really been able to entice anybody with that build-out. And for those, again, on the EDC Board, the way this was structured is, it was a tenant puts in a certain amount of the front money, then we fill a gap with our $30.41, then they pick up the back piece. So of 100% of their cost, a custom tenant build-out of their own space, they had to come up with 15% of the cost, money first in, then the $30 a square foot times whatever square footage they were getting, the EDC through the funds from 501 Proctor filled in, and then afterwards, any remaining cost after those two pots were put up, also had to be put up by the tenant. So effectively, in Mr. Hayes's mind, better than mine, but the $30 a square foot probably still left the tenants with, in an average build-out, still coming up with about 70% of the total build-out cost.
I have a question. The explanation you just gave about the front end and the middle part, is that documented? So as the members of the EDC Board changes, people will have a document that they can refer to in the future?
You mean as far as the 15? That's all part of the letter of intent that would go out to any tenant right now. That's the way, now, remember, the chamber's different, it was an entire build-out turnkey project, but the letters of intent... It was an entire build-out turnkey project, but the letters of intent that have been drafted since then have that 15%, then the EDC build-out allowance through your money.
So, but the letter of intent is going out to the prospective person?
Right. And that format we developed, and Mr. Hayes has it to carry, but as we say, is probably one of the challenges we have is, is the terms of that LOI, as it's drafted, going to really meet the market right now?
Yeah, so my question was, however we plan to do that, is that documented, that process for the members of the EDC board as that change? It's not just the letter of intent? So, you gave us a historical overview. Thank you for refreshing my memory also of what we did, but it would probably help the board members to have some history, because these members may change whenever the council positions change.
Exactly.
And then we're reinventing the wheel again.
No doubt.
So, it would help to have, especially for the chair, whomever sits in the seat, to have that information, and it may already be available, but that needs to be shared with the board members as they come on, so they will know. And then the other question I had, to just clarify, because I never did really understand the verbiage on the incubator, would that be changed in the EDC's minutes?
Well, no, I don't think, it's a government record, so we don't change them, but the...
So, are you going to go back and, so it was a motion, so there is a parliamentary procedure to amend it or do something, right?
Correct. But Mr. Baptiste said even when it was an incubator, it somehow got construed to be rent-free. He said it was never the intent that it was rent-free, but it could be, but it might be...
So, again, Mr. Goodson, sorry for cutting you off, as the board members change, and you go back to the history of what's there, here's the document in the minutes where it stated incubator in your motion.
That's correct.
So, I'm not a parliamentarian, but I would think that there's some type of protocol, if we made a motion, that you amended or do something to it to get the verbiage correct of what the intent is.
Board members, if it's called an incubator or an office space, it's still the same space. What is the difference, ma'am? May I ask, what's the difference?
Well, incubator has a definition to it, Floyd.
Well, it's a period of time they could stay in it, right?
I understand what you're saying, but it's still, it's not the same.
Well, you know, we normally have a period of time, but I think the intent, the intent is to lease the space, you know, if, well, we could remove the word incubator, put office space.
Just amend it, huh?
What we do is, if it's the pleasure of the board, which it sounds like it is, is that if Mr. Baptiste, now on your next regular or special meeting, but more like regular meeting, which will be the fifth or sixth of September, the Tuesday after Labor Day, and he brings the cost back, that we simply will clarify that this was for a cost estimate for the build-out of four spec office spaces for rent and not for free, and it's not to be referred to as an incubator. So, we'll make sure that the agenda item is correct, and as we move forward. We also, again, I think, between now and then, from our vantage point, from the EDC board, also for the benefit of 501 Proctor, need to work with Mr. Hayes to make certain that before, and I think it's an excellent point about sending back out the letter of intent, but possibly not to muddy the water up, if that's not really going to meet the market, as they say, we probably ought to, at that next meeting, also have a, an updated letter of intent form that gets blessed by our manager, Mr. Hayes, by Mr. Baptiste, and come up with what is a practical number to approach prospective tenants with on sharing, such as it may be necessary, a build-out cost. There, I guess is a short way of saying is, we probably going to be throwing more money at this than the $292,000, which we had hoped would be the end of the contribution towards build-out by either of these bodies. It just doesn't look like that's going to be enough to get people enticed to be in the building.
Go ahead.
I've looked up the definition of incubator, and it's a business incubator, is something that provides services in addition to space, oftentimes management and other professional services and equipment. And I do not think that that's the same thing as a spec space. That, to me, is two different things, and it should be clarified.
I agree.
And Ms. Womack?
I agree. Just a minute. I think one of the things that we need to be sure of is that every time we have an item on the agenda, and I will take some responsibility for that, when we use terms that are known to the profession, we need to be sure that those terms are accurate and specific, and I think that's why this question has come up. And it was a, it was really the wrong use of the word. And as you said, Ms. Womack, and I think we do need to revisit that, and we will be sure to look at that then. Mr. Baptiste?
Well, you know, as the professional economic development, what I recommend to this board is an incubator, and I come back with that same recommendation to this board, because in my world, to grow small business, it's not many businesses operate out of a 200, 300-foot square foot space. They get in there, they grow themselves, and they move on. They move on. And, you know, I think it's, I'm just speaking to the board, I think it's going to be very difficult to tie down somebody for a four-year, five-year lease for 200, 300 square foot, because they intend, hopefully, they will grow. I think in my business is to grow small business so that we could create more small business in this town. You know, you guys, I just can't see a business coming in here unless it's a one-man shop and that's all you need, is 200 square feet, and doing business for a long period of time. I see someone coming in here for maybe 18 months, maybe two years, growing his business and then creating a business outside of this business. But I cannot see somebody coming, and hopefully, someone will come and have a long-term lease with us, and it's just going to be a continuous turnover. In economic development, our job is to grow our small business, and I brought this to the board with the intent of growing small business in this community. In this community, we have a lot of small business, but they're operating inside the garage. It's to take those folks outside the garage and make them legitimate, tax-paying business, and grow employment in this community. That's why I bring to you guys, and today I'm going to still recommend it be an incubator.
And I think we respect that. We respect that, but I think the board is saying that what we'd like to do is look at what you said you wanted, and those were spec offices, and we don't want to use the term, we may not want to use the term, and I can't speak totally for the board, we may not want to use the term incubator, because it may imply different things to different people, and I don't think that's the intent of this board.
And I heard Ms. Womack comments, the service that's being, that would be, that's normally provided to an incubator, Ms. Womack, is provided by those local junior colleges, those local universities that currently have students within their system that's looking for intern to get practical experience with real business. And the concept that I brought to you guys 18 months ago was to bring students from Lamar University who are majoring in customer service, who's majoring in marketing, who's majoring in accounting, to give them practical experience so that they, when they get their certificate or their diploma, they not only help our small business grow and grow his business, but help themselves move on to a job where they have practical experience. That's the intent. And I think if you guys begin to look at other incubators all across the country, and it's happening everywhere, you go to Phoenix, they got a building about big as this, nothing but about 50 or 60, small business, with the universities assisting these small businesses grow. And what happened, as that business grow, they move on out into the community and create jobs, build buildings, become a taxpayer. But, you know, again, it is the intent of this board, but my recommendation is still an incubator.
Ms. Hoffs?
Only so many mics, is going to only pick up so many mics at one time?
No, there's too many.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now it's on. Then can you explain to me then what the advantage would be of incubators to 501 Proctor and our indebtedness that we owe?
The 501 Proctor, you would have, you know, it's really no advantage to you guys. It's an advantage to the Economic Development Board in the City of Port Arthur. The 501 Proctor, you're going to get paid if nothing happens up there. Your note's going to be paid if nothing happens. Currently, every quarter, EDC is paying 501 $12,500 every quarter. If I had no tenant, none, but it's no advantage to 501 board.
Okay. That's right, ma'am. That's right.
Is so many mics have... Go ahead.
I understand that, Floyd, I really do, because the building I, where my, the blast bank I was at, I mean, we did, we had something similar to that. And I understand that the note will be paid. Can Mr. Hayes come to the mic? I mean, can we, that's his expertise. I mean, we got to be creative, because right now you have empty. You have one big empty building. So, we have to become creative. I mean, you call it what you want, but we have a common goal, and that's to fill these rooms, to fill these offices. So, we need to be creative. I mean, we can talk about the incubator, the specs, whatever, but we, at the end of the day, they need to be filled.
Right. And I will say to you, Councilman, if it's an incubator and office space, whoever occupied that space will pay a dollar ten per square foot.
Yeah, it has to be. I mean, we...
And the intent has always been that.
Yeah.
I had a question.
Counselor, oh, I'm sorry.
I got a question. Mr. Baptiste, you stated that it's always been a dollar ten square foot?
Yes, sir. That is, in our agreement, we have a dollar ten per square foot.
Okay. I just got on the board, so that history that you just talked about, the $292,000, that's tax credit money. That has nothing to do with the 501 program?
It is 501 money.
It's 501. It was allocated to this board?
No, sir. At one time, this board met with 501, or 501 agreed to allow this board to use the money for the third or second floor bill-out, but it is their money. You know, you could use the money, but as I spend that money, or as that money is spent, I still have to go back to these folks and make sure, because they cashing the checks. They write, their signatures is on the check, not yours. It's their money.
So, based on what we voted on our last meeting, exactly, what did we vote on?
You, go ahead.
Update the proposed build-out cost to bring them back to you all for approval, because, one, some of the numbers are, you know, that, any contractor that gives you an estimate of the cost is only going to be good for so long. The time period's run out. We were going to update this, and also the last time we went to get a cost estimate, there were a few specific sort of special tenant custom items in that bid, and so this would, was to go back and just get what I would call sort of a plain vanilla build-out for those four offices in a common area to see if we were, see where we are. I think, obviously, because we'd be spending more money on the third floor, we're not having a tenant in there, we're putting 100% of the money in, it's, it will use a substantial part of, but it probably won't use 100% of the remaining money, but it would be then up to us to go to 501 Proctor and say is, instead of basing this on a $30.41, spreading over tenant build-out on these two floors, we'd like to spend $175,000 plus or minus of funds, no, I'm sorry, it's 80 plus 100.
Seventy. The restroom, the beer was 70,000, I think.
And the other part was a...
Two twenty-three.
Two twenty-three, all right, well, but that was specialized. So, it may use it all, but it was, in other words, it would be, we'll want to spend 100% of the money up on the third floor.
So, based on what we asked him to do, then you would bring that back to...
Bring it back to you, and if you all say this looks good, we'd ask for their approval, and then we take it to City Council, well, no, we don't have to take that one to City Council. So, we approve it, and then we take it to them and ask them to approve it as well.
They would approve the floor plans of this building based upon the recommendation of Vince Hauser, who is the historical architect for this building.
But this is just, this is just to collect data right now. This is no commitment of anything until you get the new numbers back in.
Mr. Marks, in your package, I have given you numbers on, if you look at the very first one, the very first one, one of them says 251,000 at the bottom. That was the number with, what, custom-built for AAY, okay? Then the second proposal I gave you guys, it says 232. We remove out that custom-built and just build four office space without that restroom, but it was kind of designed for them without the rest, because the original one, they wanted a restroom and other things. Now, as to just building four, because the design is changing, because it's going to be individual offices now and not one office, we don't know the cost. I don't think it's going to be that much different from the 232, though.
And the reason I'm asking that is that going through the documents that were sent to us via email, I think, yeah, 20 days that these prices were good?
Yes, sir.
And before they had to, they were standard for 20 days. So, now we're past that 20-day window, they're going to be, they're going to give us new pricing.
Numbers change.
Numbers could change a little bit, yes, sir.
So, that's why I'm asking, when we going to get the new numbers?
Well, hopefully, we will get those new numbers shortly, and that, and it would be well within that 20-day period by the time you're able to hold your next meeting.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Mark. The numbers may change.
So, let me ask a question. If we were to have the build-out with AAY, would have only been a $30,000 difference?
Yes, ma'am.
And we need to recall, that doesn't include the required 80,000, $79,000 of common area. So, there wasn't enough money to do both without the EDC going and obtain some approval from the city for use of development funds to do the project, but they have since moved on, so.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Can I speak, please? Thank you. As far as the restroom on the third floor, which has been a pet peeve of mine the whole time, I can't imagine having that wonderful, wonderful meeting area up there and no restroom. You can't use the one in Chamber of Commerce. So, if you're having any kind of a little training session or seminar, anything upstairs on that third floor, you have to come all the way down to the first floor to use it. So, to me, a priority right now is that restroom, and you're going to attract people. They come up there to see that, and they're like, where's a restroom? You know, you've got a little kitchen area, you've got a beautiful meeting room... You know, you've got a little kitchen area, you've got a beautiful meeting room, no restroom. So we need to prioritize these things and, and this is what attracts people. Because whoever leases all of this is going to use that room. They're going to need it for meetings, for seminars, for training sessions, whatever. So we have to, we can't eliminate the restroom. There's no way.
No, you're, you're exactly right.
That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
Madam Chairperson?
Certainly.
And members of the, let me get this right, EDC and 501. I would be remiss without saying that it's nice to have these kind of problems to talk about because this is a fantastic building, okay? I mean, it, it is beautiful and nobody, when you bring people down here, they're very impressed. Our office market is not the best right now. We have, I'm talking about in our area, we have quite a bit of vacant space, the dollar 10 per square foot. And let me remind you that that's per month. In a big market like in Houston, they talk about dollars per year per foot. But we're in a small market and we normally talk about it on a monthly basis, okay? We're at a dollar 10. I think that's about the right number. But as far as the build-out, I think we really need to give a lot of thought to that because the market, people are not gonna pay build-out. Because they can go other places. Recently, somebody that was at a dollar 15, that's probably space is equal to this, okay? They said, we'll come off of that a little bit. We'll give you furniture to put in your office. You know, that, people are doing that because we have a shortage of demand. We, even though this is relatively speaking, a small market for office space, we don't have the demand. We have a little more supply than would be good for the market. And the maximum rate right now, and people are having a hard time getting it, is, and this is the max, dollar 35. Some of what I would call your competition might be around a dollar. But I, I don't think you can get, in other words, price is not our problem per foot per month. But the build-out is a problem. And, and I think we're gonna have a hard time getting people to pay, quite frankly, anything for build-out. That's just where our market is. Because they can go someplace else and people will either pay the build-out or it's already ready to go. So I'd be happy to, quite frankly, I, I went back and looked at rental rates on office space. Well, I, I went back 40 years, that's a long time. But quite frankly, it's not growing. The rental rates are not growing fast in our area for office space. Now, other, other types of real estate are different. But right now, we have more than ample space and the competition will not, in my opinion, will not allow us to charge people for the build-out. I'd be happy to try to answer any question. I do appreciate working on this building and working with you all. I, I love this building. I think downtown Port Arthur has a lot to offer. And in the future, if, if this thing built up like it should and some of the, let me just remind you. The, a lot of people that, Mr. Baptiste mentioned about people working in their garage or they working in their bedroom, with all this modern equipment, people can do that. In the old days, they had to have somebody answering that telephone all the time. So you might, you know, that was very important. But today, you can be down on the beach and do business over the telephone, you know? So with computers, it's changed the world. Caprina could verify this. 10 to 15 years ago, we had financial institutions that were doing their daily work, their closeouts in our area. They don't do that anymore, so they don't need that space. And that put a lot of space on the market. When the financial institutions, they probably had 30 or 40 people in the back room being sure that, you know, we had enough money in our accounts to, our checks to go through, you know? But today, that's not happening in Port Arthur, Texas.
Everything is remote.
That's exactly right. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, yes, ma'am.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you for coming here tonight and giving us the opportunity to ask you some questions. You and I have been doing this for a long, long time.
I'm a little older than you.
Just a little bit.
Thank you.
But we ride around a lot and our eyes are peeled for things. And myself, I see like new little strip centers and things. It will say out there, we'll build to suit. Doesn't say, we're gonna charge you to build it. It says, we will build to suit whatever their needs are.
There's some signs like that on Twin City right now.
Exactly. So asking someone to help with build-out is out of the question to me. In all the years I've been doing it, I've never seen it happen. I have seen them offer to paint and put new flooring and stuff, but to build out and move walls and add walls and do all this other stuff, add restrooms and things, and ask the tenant to pay for it, I have never seen it done.
It has not been the history of Port Arthur to do that.
Right.
Has not.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to know. You, you deal in the commercial part of it more than I do. And that's what I wanted to ask you is, what was your opinion of that type of scenario? Asking the tenant to put their own money into a building they don't even own and may not be there for three or four years?
I don't think in this market, we're gonna be successful doing that. I mean, I wished we could raise our rate, but actually, this dollar and 10 is about the right amount to be asking people.
Okay. Ms. Womack?
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes? My question is, in your professional opinion, and we do appreciate what you're doing for the EDC and 501 Proctor and for us. But in, in your professional opinion, what size office is most in demand?
Well, we used to say that one person would take 200 square feet, okay? And that may be down, but let's just use that. That's historically what we've used. One person would use 200 square feet, okay? The, we have a lot of small businesses in Port Arthur. A person can operate themselves with the modern equipment. They can do it. One, but I would say our average tenant, and this is just a quick, is gonna have about four people, maybe five. I'm, 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 that's gonna be about the average.
The, the small businesses?
Yes, ma'am, of small businesses.
I'm surprised at that number. I would think two or three at max.
Well, I'm talking about established businesses.
Established businesses.
Small businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anything else, Madam Chairman? Chairperson, I'm sorry. I know better.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions?
All, and I know we have an agenda item, but I, I think at the end of the day, what we wanted to get today is, is much of this information out to the board with the view that we are hopeful that the 501 Proctor Board is still, wants to join along with the PADC in trying to use this remaining money. First cut is for improvements in, in the building, which would be through tenant build-out. And again, that being said, we probably do need to state again that when we, we, the EDC, went to 501 Proctor, we, we stated that the intention was to allocate that out at $30.41 a square foot over this approximately 6,000 and change build-out, square-footage area. What I think we're saying now is, that's probably not the case. We're probably going to be utilizing this more in one, first of all, we're gonna build a bathroom. And, and after that, you're gonna have somewhere between 200 and $220,000 left, 210,000. And so we will probably be coming back as this body gets numbers and asking them to collaborate with us, possibly even for a single, a single use of that and not tied to a specific square foot tenant build-out number. So I see that as the, probably the primary change that could happen once this board sees a new set of numbers and decides, and I'm not saying this is the case, but if they decide, yes, let's go ahead with the four, over the third floor, four office build-out. Or this body could come back and say, no, let's wait and see if we get a real viable tenant for the second floor and let's use all that money for them. But, you know, I think it'll be probably one of those two options.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Mr. Baptiste, this sparkler asks, quote for renovations, is this the actual quote? Is this the actual quote? I don't see commo's or anything on it. Is that? Yeah. Sinks or mirrors or, so is that included in the quote? Sir? Okay, there's just a, okay. It has it on that. I can't hear, I can't hear you guys.
There was a, a build-out drawing of the restroom facilities showing a completed facility for the $70,000. But it just wasn't attached to this. I think what they did more than anything else is make sure they included the additional cost. But there is, it's been approved by Mr. Hauser, a, a build-out plan for that. The reason we just never moved on it is that there'll probably be a little bit of cost savings if we could go ahead and have the same contractor in to do the remainder of the work, if they choose to do it on the third floor.
Madam Chair. So, Guy, you wanting to know if 501 Proctor wants to stay the course, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
On keeping the money for?
Tenant building, yes, ma'am.
For the building. Just start talking. Just start talking. It'll go, it'll go on, see?
Can you do it? Do you want, do you want a motion?
It, it's the pleasure of the 501 Board. I, I think what we just wanted to make sure is that that was still the preference to use the remaining chase loan funds for tenant build-out in 501 Proctor. And we'll kinda take off the table a certain dollar amount per square foot. We'll just say, you all would like for us to bring you a proposal for the bathroom and whatever other tenant build-out could be accomplished for that 292,000.
All right, I need a motion.
I make a motion.
You wanna state what it is?
To, to, to continue to approve the 292,000 for tenant build-out with the third floor bathrooms being the first project to complete and then the remainder on either the second or the third floor when we bring you a viable tenant prospect.
Okay, that was the motion.
Second.
We have a second, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't know that your board needs to take any actions since you've directed Mr. Baptiste to come back with those very numbers. We will clarify and take out, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure the wording is correct when we bring it back and let Mr. Baptiste present this to you all with a new update.
We have any other questions or comments? We have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded at the meeting, be adjourned, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, Joanie.